Good afternoon, everyone. The town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that it was located on treaty six territory. And making nation region number four. These are the traditional territories and ancestral lands of the indigenous people. Including the Plains Creed First Nations, of Sina Wuchi, Winawak, Rocky Mountain First Nations, Stoney, Tassina, Nakota. The name Celine, Soko. Mountain matey, the chief, and many other communities that continue to enrich the land over the time of him who wants established. So with this sentiment, we will start our meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Here's something have an adoption of the agenda please. Any changes to the agenda?
Well, the chair administration has done.
And council, any changes? I want to move to a gentleman or have someone adopt the agenda please.
You know, agenda.
And always a favor. And carry. Thank you. So any, anyone with a minimum counsel? And any delegations? And then. We're going to go right into our reports from administration. We'll start with five point one, and that's trails committee, and that is on page three. Of your agenda and to administration.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Rice through to the remainder of committee. Uh, this item is reported today as an outstanding item um from actually twenty twenty two budget. Um, given the upcoming level of service. Uh, review that council will be conducting, administration is recommending that we await the results of that. Um, level of service review in order to add to the information that we already have. In our parks, open spaces and trails master plan um surrounding connectivity. Um, two other options are available for council. Um, the first option being to create a committee, which of course requires the terms of reference and also establishing a bylaw. Um, do a working committee or working group, uh, which also requires a terms of reference. So just given the the timeline, um, it's. It just seemed to uh. Kind of follow a thoughtful path if we were to wait those for those results from level of service. However, I will accept any questions at this time.
Yeah, no, sure, um, Karen.
Whatever the option we pick, would the proposal exclude or include the Beaver Boardwalk work?
So. That would be to the direction of council as to what um scope they wanted to give this trails committee if it were to be established. Um, however, it's likely that we will have information back from our consultants. Surrounding the trail at the Beaver Boardwalk area. Um, so that could be, it could be incorporated um at a later date within a committee if that was the will of council.
I I do have a question. So the intent of this committee is that to um, you know, have signage out there. So people don't get lost like eating the moon there about that long ago. So what is the intent?
Um, thank you, Councilor Rice, through the remainder of the committee. Um. Actually, this this matter was brought forward by council. Um, and I was able through C O Hanlon to have a brief conversation with Councilor Haas. Um, and at that time he had told me that it was largely to do with connectivity. However, signage, um, that is something that is being addressed by the Beaver Boardwalk Committee and would um be included in connectivity as well, because we need to tell people which way to go.
Okay, good, thank you. Counsel, any other questions, comments, and Mr. Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I I'm comfortable putting for the recommended action. Uh, by adminis- administration option three or C, uh, and if I can speak to it, uh, Madam Chair.
Are you certainly mean?
Um, I, for me, it was, I I could do either or. I have no problem doing a committee. Uh, but if administration wants to bring forward a um, a connectivity plan, uh, uh. Solicit, you know, uh, some input from the community. Uh, and then that's our starting point to polish it up later. I'm fine with that, too. The ideal here is to. Uh, get better trails. Uh, so let's see what administration brings us. Uh, and move forward from there. So I'm I'm really supportive of the recommended action. Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Chair.
Um, Councilor Taylor.
Yeah, me, me too, because the concept of connectivity is a little bit vague to me, and then you you guys go when you identify where the options are and, you know. Maybe some of the costs of those options are, because if there's any more five hundred thousand dollar bridges in the options, I don't want those options. Have to be. You know, cost effective, I think that we'll get that, and then we can focus down on what we want.
Councilor Haas.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, I'm in agreement with the recommended action as well as Mayor Michael's. Um, you know, it's more than just connectivity, uh, in a way, it's 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 all about the trails in our community. Um, and, uh, you know, and and there's certain areas of our community that aren't connected by, so. I'm looking forward to first that service level review, of course. Um, and then where we stand with that, and then, yeah, administration bringing us some forward some information that we can, uh. You know, take away and and of course, it's going to be budgetary and all that involved in it as well. So I think that's probably the best route to go at this time, and then if a committee is is required or a working group. That includes council and and uh administration together to move forward on this. I I'm all for that as well. So, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Councilor Haas. So, Mr. Mayor, to understand this, are you putting forth the motion for option one?
Uh, if I may, Madam Chair, I know just the recommended action, uh, I guess that would be, uh, option C. Is what they spoke to, or my apologies if I got that mistaken. Just the recommended action, the committee direct administration to proceed with development. Is. Is that okay, or?
Okay, would um, would option C equal option number one, correct? Yes.
Yes.
So before I call the question, does uh council have any other, anything else they want to say about this? They'll call the question, the committee direct administration to proceed with the developing of trails level. Trails level of service and connectivity plan using information derived from the organizational wide service level review. And to bring the plan to council for approval one month after receipt of the surface level review. Council, all those in favor? And next, Karen. Council, anything more on this um item?
Thank you.
And we will move on to um. Second, um, item on our um. Agenda. And then in five point two, community grant program amendments, um, recourse package. And that is pages seven to twenty four. Again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Alexa is with us and having gone through the spring intake. Of our grant program. And with the input of both the committee and council, we have brought back some proposed changes, and Alexa will take us through that now. We're on page seven of your agenda.
So what we learned from this last intake um was the. The public was not using the uh SCSS uh support for the grant application writing. And this has been a decline for a while, and to address that, um. We created a document that people aren't able to access online if they don't feel comfortable coming in. Uh, in person, um, and this is made up of the uh do's and don'ts checklist. And this document was actually created so that groups can use this. For the community grant, but also uh in future uh grant applications. So it's along with what the community grant is doing, setting these groups up for success and sustainability. This document is to uh provide that support as well. Um, and the other uh document in the reference package is the application. Uh, breakdown. So it goes through every single question and chart and box that you have to check. Breaking down not just what we're looking for for content, but how it should be written. So we are finding that some answers were really focused on the how. And not really, or sorry, focused on the the why, but not the how they're going to complete it, and. Sustainability was interpreted in different ways and points that we found. We're getting kind of the wires crossed. This is the document that they can go through question by question and know exactly what to say and how to say it. Um. Well, I reached out to finance as well to make sure that. They all agreed that how the the support for the questions were answered did align with what they were looking for as well. And the the last uh amendment is to the waiting criteria, which would be to. Have an additional ten points to give if the group agrees and does attend the ten minute Q and A. Ten minutes their time, ten points. Uh, that was something that we found groups weren't understanding how important it was to have the face to face interaction, to be able to deliver their elevator pitch. To the 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 committee and ultimately. Have a big impact to the outcome of their um application if it was successful or not. So this is kind of a little uh incentive for them and uh. Good for the group as well, because we get, we benefit a lot from hearing what they have to say when they come in for the ten minute Q and A. And that's everything from the report.
Thank you, thank you so much. Counsel, any questions for amendment? I haven't much.
Yes.
It was, you know, it's extremely intimidating for people to come in here and sit in front of, you know, four or five people. And and give their story. It's very intimidating. And I sat on this for several years and saw. The pain that some people went through. Was there any discussion in maybe the committee? Going out into that person's environment and having that time in the chat.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Rice. No, we didn't. We actually did not discuss an option. Um. I can bring that back to you and discuss that with the group. Uh, you with this last time, uh, with this last intake, sorry, the timeline was very short and uh already having the two meetings from these groups. It was. Um, maybe not achievable in for that last intake, but if we plan for the future and I discuss it with the group and see what we can do. Definitely can see how um uh that is something possible for the future.
Thank you. Councilor Haas.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um. I I'm all for this uh new. New way, or I guess the new storing system. Um, I think it's very beneficial. Uh, for that group to come to the group, because being part of that group as well. Sometimes there were some questions that we may have had that weren't answered necessarily in the report. And it it's having those the individuals. Available to to answer some of those questions can sometimes be the difference between whether they get the funding or not. Um, and, uh, you know, I I hear what Council Race is saying, however, I I would have to. Argue that it's hard enough to get volunteers for this group, but and to schedule. Uh, you know, them around the tables and to have to ask them to go out to other people. I think it's just reasonable for the 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 uh. Uh, the groups to come to them and answer those questions, but I think it's a great opportunity for them to. Uh, to to answer those questions that may not be answered, so. Um, I'm I'm looking forward to what the rest of council is to say, but I. I'd be comfortable with moving forward with the uh option one, the committee accept the amendment to the waiting criteria. And the addition of the reference package to the community grant program. Madam Chair, if I can make that most or that direction.
Certainly can. Did you just make that?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so, um, council, we have a uh. Motion on the floor, any discussion? Yes, sir. Councilor stop.
Uh, so I have a clarifying question and then potentially a follow up, I mean. Um, it's regarding the ten minute question and answer session with the grant funding advisory committee. Uh, what is it now? Is it mandatory? Is it recommended? Is it optional?
Uh, thank you. It is. It is optional.
Okay. Uh, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
So I I agree as well that it's important that the applicants do come before the grant funding advisory committee. To be able to answer any clarifying questions, it's to their benefit, and also having sat on that committee in the past. It's very beneficial when the committee or when the applicants come before you so that they can answer any questions that the group they have. So. Although I'm not really sure about the adding bonus points for the criteria, if that's the incentive that it takes to get them to come to the table. Then I guess that's that's what has to happen. Um. I prefer that they just understood the importance of uh being able to receive a. A good score by coming and being able to answer the questions, but if this is what it takes, I'm I'm fully supportive of that, too. Thank you.
Sure. So anything else from council before I call the question? And. Yeah, I have a moment. Forward. Okay, I'll call the question. The committee accept the amendment to the weighing criteria and the addition of the reference package to the community grant program. All those in favor? And that's Karen. Alexa, thank you so much. Oh, Councilor Taylor.
Yeah, um, just a minor question. Um, so when I look at the ranking criteria on page twenty four, I don't see the ten percent optional added in there. That's because it's not in there.
It's going to be the application here.
Somewhere in here.
Yeah, so in the app, or in the application. Where it says if you're going to, we'll make a note there to say that you did. That will be the original one.
So council, um, we're moving on to. Our third report from administration, and that's on page twenty five. And it deals with termination of the automated traffic enforcement contract, M D two, six, three, nine, and administration.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Heather, I believe back is waiting to join us. The director of protective services is going to take us through this report, and administration is available for any questions.
Thank you very much, uh, C O Hanlon, uh, through the chair. To committee, uh, we have a report prepared, uh, stemming from the last committee of the whole meeting, uh, where we were directed to. Uh, administration was directed to extend. The existing agreement for defined period. Sorry. That's not correct. We were directed to go return with a report. Uh, regarding the termination of uh the A T E contract and what our options were in that regard. Uh, I put together quite a lengthy report, and I I spent two days. On a weekend putting, gathering up the information, the history of the A T E and in uh Hinton. And that forms part the most of the attachments and all the background information. There's quite a quite a lot of history. And the contract has changed over the years. It's been. Ex- expanded and contracted and uh zones were taken away. And uh, there's been a lot of changes over the year. Over the years. Uh, going straight to the analysis portion of the report. A T E is is just a tool. That can be used to enhance compliance, to deter violations and and to enforce the traffic laws. But it can only be operated in a municipality with the support of the local R C M P. And the local detachment is also ultimately responsible for traffic safety enforcement on highways and roadways within the town of Hinton. Uh, with joint efforts between the local R C M P, the community peace officers and other police agencies. And an A T E, A T E provider incidents are potentially. Reduced, and policing resources are able to be more effectively allocated to competing community policing priorities. More boots on the ground. The original agreement with global traffic was established way back in two thousand and six. And because of the town receiving numerous complaints from traffic safety and pedestrian safety. In particular, the areas where Switzer Drive. The school zones, the many school zones in town, highway sixteen near the Thompson Lake turnoff. And highway sixteen near Parks West Mall. All four of the those categories are still high priorities in Hinton. Uh, the most recent contract that we have with uh global is set to expire on February twenty second, twenty twenty three. Uh, photo enforcement has always been a controversial uh topic in many communities. Uh, proponents believe that photo enforcement can play an important role. In increasing traffic safety. And opponents claim that its primary purpose is just raving ta- raising revenue for tax averse governments. Initially, the A T E program in Hinton was met with considerable success. And there has been a decrease in motor vehicle incidents in high collision areas. The revenue stream generated by A T E enforcement contributed to funding several traffic safety initiatives. Like school crossings. And flashing lights. Uh. And the funding of community grants. And there have been consider, there have been contributions to defined reserve fund. For these purposes in accordance to the town policy number seventy eight. In the past two years. A T E program in Hinton has realized a sharp decrease in the number of violation tickets issued. This can be directly attributed to the COVID nineteen. Restrictions and the decrease in traffic on the highway through town. Commuter traffic within town and the dis- discontinuance of school zones during school closures. Staff and the R C M P were also directed. Uh, to decrease traffic enforcement because of the financial hardships that the public were already facing. As a result of COVID nineteen crisis. This contributed to a shortfall. On the anticipated A T E revenue on the twenty twenty and twenty twenty one budgets. And that had to be offset by drawing from the A T E reserves. During the COVID nineteen crisis. Administration agreed, former administration agreed with Global Traffic Group. To reduce the required hours of operation to provide between twelve and eighteen hours per week of A T E services. Uh, the contract states that they would do sixty four hours per week. Uh, global traffic has the ability to provide expertise and provide the full suite of A T E programs. And the town has been satisfied with the contractor's service. And performance in the past until recently, under the current agreement. So as I said, the required hours of operation under the existing agreement are not being met. And administration anticipates that we will have a shortfall on twenty twenty two budget projections. And the current agreement term is set to end on December thirty first, twenty twenty two. So terminating the uh A T E agreement does have implications. Uh, we would have to to maintain the level of service that we provide. Uh, the R C M P and community peace officers would need to increase conventional. Uh, traffic enforcement methodologies to maintain the same level of service. Excuse me. Uh, terminating the agreement requires a hundred and twenty days notice. That actually brings us to recommendations. I've given four options, uh. That committee direct administration to allow the current agreement to expire. On December thirty first, twenty twenty two, with intent to cease the existing A T E program effect of that date. And issue a request for proposal to select an alternate A T E operator for Hinton. And to negotiate a new new agreement. That, so this option would require us to give a hundred and twenty days notice to global, and we would have to do that by the September second. And the net and the town would also need to issue an R F B. Option two, the committee direct administration to extend the existing agreement for a defined period. To allow time to uh explore alternative traffic pacifying and enforcement methods. And to negotiate a modified agreement with global traffic. Option three, the committee direct administration to cease the A T E program and provide global traffic group a hundred and twenty days notice. Uh, the this, with this intent, we that the, like I said earlier. Uh, the R C M P and peace officers and the other police agencies. Uh, would have to explore. Alternate strategies for traffic enforcement and use conventional methods. And this option would also impact councils' allocation of future A T E uh proceeds under policy seventy eight. And the fourth option would be the committee give alternate direction to administration, and if you could excuse me, I need to drink water.
He's drinking water. Madam, I believe Matt is done, and I believe Counselor Haas had a question.
Thank you, um. Thank you, Fair Chief, Councilor Haas.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Just one question, Chief Bo Drap. The hundred and twenty days, is there any financial um obligations with that as well, or is it just a hundred and twenty days? And then our contract is 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 discontinued then?
Uh, through the chair to Counselor Huss and the remainder of council. Um, no, there is no financial penalty, but if we give the hundred and twenty days, a hundred and twenty days notice.
Okay, thank you.
I thank you, Councilor Ross and Councilor General.
He's good.
Madam Chair. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Chief, go ahead.
Uh, Madam Chair, to add to that, the not only would there not be financial penalty. Any tickets that have been issued to date would still, uh, the proceeds that are belonging to town of Hinton would still go through the system and come to Hinton.
You're good with that, Councilor Haas? Councilor Taylor.
Um, based on the answers to the questions, uh, I I sent the town manager on Monday and this morning. Um, I'm under the impression that we're not really losing money on this program. We have something that we call bad debt. On these uh financial sheets. But it's not really bad debt. It's more like deferred revenue. It's collectible in the next year or two as uh vehicles get registered. And we're not doing out of province uh tickets. We're doing uh tickets on Alberta registered vehicles. So, um, there is no such thing as bad uncollectible debt. There's only deferred revenue. And and if there is bad or uncollectible debt, what exactly is it? Is it? For example, when somebody goes to court because the global people don't show up at court. That they 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 get their ticket uh thrown out, and if if that's the case, that's got to be like a miniscule amount of the bad debt. So could you explain, please? Because I saw previously, I think it'd be led to believe. That there was a large amount of bad uncollectible debt with this, and it just doesn't seem to be so.
Through the chair to Counselor Taylor and the rest of the committee, uh, you're you're correct in that. The um. The deferred debt would be a better term. Uh, it could be deferred for several years. Uh, it, in most cases, it's only up to a year. Uh, that would be when somebody goes to re-register their vehicle, and they've got a ticket online there. Uh, they have to pay it before they're able to re-register their vehicle. So that would be definitely deferred debt, but we do have to withdraw from our reserves to balance our books. So what? Appears to be bad debt uh to me is not reaching the targets that were budgeted for. So in previous years, there was. I'm just going to pull a number out of my head here. Uh, say there's four thousand, four hundred thousand dollars anticipated revenue. And we only only two hundred thousand dollars worth of tickets were written. We still have to offset that on our bucks. By drawing from revenue. To balance our our balance sheet.
Correct, and then the next year we get that money back as people uh register their vehicle.
No, that would be tickets that were never issued. Do you know what I mean?
No.
Okay, so if if. I, as the manager, budgeted and and said that we are going to four hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue this year. And only a hundred thousand dollars of tickets were actually issued, there would be a three hundred thousand dollar shortfall on our budget. And that has to come from somewhere to balance our budget.
Right, but that's, that's just. That's just budgeting. Okay, that's not, that's not bad debt or uncollectible tickets. So the assumption that this program is losing money. And that's going to factor into the decision making is not a correct assumption.
Through the chair, that's, that's correct. What a more accurate statement is this, this program is not making a lot of money right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Taylor, Councilor Stashik.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Just one of the things I do want to clarify that. Chief Debo Drop had just said regarding. That the town's not losing money. To me, I guess it depends how you look at it. If there's projected revenues. That aren't met and that. Money is budgeted as expenditures elsewhere, then it's being spent. So the money's spent. But the revenue doesn't come in, so that means that. As Chief Debo Drop said, that money has to be withdrawn from reserves to cover what went out in expenditure. So we are actually losing money. And I, I. I, I asked the question. Is that because Global is not fulfilling their commitment to? I believe it's sixty four hours a week that they're supposed to be doing A T E, but they're actually doing a fraction of that.
Through, through the chair. To Counselor Estashik and the committee. The contract says they need to provide sixty four hours of enforcement per week. Former administration agreed in writing to a twelve to eighteen hours a week. That was during the COVID time. And that has remained in, as far as Global's concerned, that has never been changed, so they've only been. Providing twelve to eighteen hours a week, but they haven't even been meeting that in the last few months. Here and reach the contract that in that way.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mac, is what he said true? Like, okay, we budget this much. And because we budget this much, our expenses are this much. Now, we actually get these many tickets and our expenses still stay the same. I understand that would be true prior to two thousand twenty, when we actually had salaries and other expenses. But now our only expenses are contracted services which are based on a proportion of the ticket. So how is that true, what he said? It doesn't seem to be true.
That's, if, if you look at just the. Just that section of the budget with, with the A T E portion of the budget, that is very true, Counselor Taylor. You're, you're not losing money. But if you look at the overall budget and the withdrawals to the allocations to community grants and such, yes, that money is being spent.
Yeah, basically, basically, the amount you collect. Whether it's budgeted or it's the amount you actually collect, the expenses are proportional to that amount. You can have external costs of that which are money you're going to spend on the safety program. That's, that's separate.
In reading this really, really big report. It says if we terminate our agreement with Global. That the, you know, all the signage has to come down. Does the signage have to come down if our intent is to terminate? And then hire a new company?
Through the chair, no, if we are. Put out an R F P and obtain another contractor or the same contractor with a different contract. The signage could remain. If we are not operating in A T E program, the signage would need to be removed.
Thank you. So, yes, Councilor Stashik.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A question regarding the third paragraph in the background information. Page twenty five of our council package. It refers to an expiration date of the Access to Motor Vehicle Information Regulation Agreement. Of February twenty second, twenty twenty three. And. The photo enforcement agreement expiration date of December thirty first, twenty twenty two. My question. I prefer not to try and play lawyer and try and interpret what those two different agreements mean. But what are the implications that the Amber Agreement carries on for two more months after the? Photo enforcement agreement has expired?
Through the chair to Counselor Estashik, that's a very good question. The Amber Agreement gives us access to motor vehicles information. The registered owner and everything, we would still need that for our peace officers. And for the R C P to, and our administrative support here at the station to actually. Process tickets, we still need that agreement in place. That only has one section that deals with A T E, that, that's also the conventional. Traffic enforcement that is applied under that agreement. So we will, we will be renewing that agreement, but it's not with Global. It's with the province.
Hold up, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that clarification, but just additionally, sorry, the, the statement in the report says. Agreement between the Town of Hinton and Global Traffic Group Limited. So does Global Traffic actually not play a role in that Amber Agreement?
They, they are named as users of the, of the programs. That allow them to get the registered owner's information so that they can issue tickets on our behalf.
Okay, if I may pull up once more, so there are no significant implications of the fact that there's some. Some continuation of the Amber Agreement past the A T E Agreement expiration.
No, through the chair, no, I don't believe there is. And as a matter of fact, we're. Applying for a new Amber Agreement today. Because it's set to expire and, and we've had change of users and administrators. In this department and that has not been changed to date, so we're. In the process of getting all our ducks in a row so that we still have access to Amber.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome, Councilor Taylor.
Yeah, why is administration recommending the recommendation that they do that we modify the agreement with Global Traffic? If Global's. Not meeting their current commitments, are we, we're talking about modifying the agreement up to the contract deadline date? We're talking about modifying the agreement past the contract deadline date? If you have somebody that's not. Doing what they say they do, wouldn't we just when the contract or before the contract expires, open it up to anybody? Who could possibly provide this service to us? Why would you go with the people that aren't doing what they say they would do?
Through the chair to Counselor Taylor and all of council respectfully, I'm giving you options there for council to decide from. It's. What council directs me to do, that's, that's what we'll be doing.
Yeah, no, I'm just curious as to what you're taking it, that's all, thanks.
So, Chief, my question to you is if. Global is not satisfying their requirements, the number of hours that they're supposed to be here. Has there been a conversation with Global as to why they're not?
Through the chair, yes, yes, there has, and they, they. They claim that they, they are meeting their requirements, but. From their own reporting to me, they're not meeting the requirements, even, even the modified twelve to eighteen hours. They've only done in the first quarter of twenty twenty two, I think it was thirty three hours total. So that's, that's not meeting even the modified agreement.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'm comfortable putting forward option one, it's not the recommended action, but. Option one, and if I may speak to it, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
So, I, I believe like, like any service that, that we get, I don't want to. You know, openly talk about what's not being done or, or what's being done, because we don't know what an alternative. Contractor would do. To me, it's prudent to go out to R F P for any service. We do it for auditors, we do it for. A, 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 a long list of services that are provided to the Town of Hinton, and I think it's good for competition. And then it gives us a fresh perspective of what's going on in the province and what other providers are, are out there. And if it's a, a, a good relationship, then the relationship will continue and they will apply. And for, for me. I think it's, it's important to see what our options are and then choose to, to go a different way or to choose to go. With an alternative choice, but to continue the, the contract to the end of December thirty first, twenty twenty two. Which would provide the, the safety component, I do believe A T E has a great benefit. But it gives us time to look at alternatives and to see if, do we want to continue with this provider or an alternative, so. That's what I support and I look forward to hearing the rest of council, thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, what I'm hearing from you is you have put a motion forward for option one, is that correct?
That is correct, in, on page thirty, it shows option one. And the, that would be my, my direction, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We now have a motion on the floor, council, any debate questions?
I have a question for Mac or Marcel.
Okay.
Whoever wants to answer it. It says the current agreement expires on December thirty first, two thousand twenty, and in the package it says the current agreement expires on February twenty second, two thousand twenty three. So is that? Those dates. Those dates. Are we talking two different agreements or? Why is there one date here and one date here?
I'm seeing that myself. Leave the Amber Agreement is. One date and the. Which is.
That, that's correct. Yeah, it is the twenty twenty three dates.
Correct.
The current extension with Global is the end of the year, the end of the year.
And I, I apologize for that, Counselor Taylor, that, that's an oversight on my part, putting this report together.
No, that's great, thank you.
Councilor Hawes.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to be in support of this. We've been, I mean, I think it's just good practice, as Mayor Michaels was saying that. You know, we've, we've had a company for a very long time, lots have changed in the world, in this world, and I think it's an opportunity. You know, to. Take the hundred and twenty days, utilize Global and then see move towards, you know, an R F P. For future A T services in our community, if that's the, if that's the will of council at the time. It gives us an opportunity to see, you know, what else is out there, what other options are out there, you know, and. I think that's just a good way of doing business. Who knows, maybe, we, maybe we'll see, you know, Global go in again too, who knows? But I think it's a, a good opportunity to, to see some, seek out something new. And see where, what, what flushes out with that and what the history, the future holds. So I'll be in support of the option, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hawes, Councilor Stashik.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. First question, I have two questions. First one should be really quick. It's regarding the, the proposed motion direction. There's an, there is a bullet point there that says this option would require that a hundred and twenty days notice be given to Global Traffic Group Limited by September second, twenty twenty two. My understanding then in reading that is that there's a requirement to give a hundred and twenty days notice that. The town will not be renewing a contract that's set to expire, is that correct? We have to give notice that we're not renewing?
That is correct. The way I read the agreement, it automatically renews if we don't give notice.
Okay, can I ask a second question?
Certainly.
Okay, so my second question is, is somewhat related. If, if the proposed direction is accepted, does that give any latitude? For administration to explore any other options for. For traffic safety in the community? Because I was actually thinking about a. Combination of a couple of the options, actually to give some more latitude to how. How traffic enforcement's done in our community. I, I'm okay with, with option one. But I ideally wanted to see some of option three. Rolled into their specifically joint, joint effort with the R C M P Peace Officers and other enforcement agents, agencies. To explore alternative strategies and tactics to complement the overall traffic safety efforts in Hinton. So it'd be a potential, you know, combination of potential A T E enforcement along with some other. Enhanced conventional enforcement maybe. So I'm okay with option one, but like to see an exploration, I wonder if that's. Is that, is that available with the parameters of just option one as presented?
Through the chair to Counselor Estashik, absolutely, that we have the latitude to direct operations as we see fit. As a town, so the peace officer, now that we're up to two peace officers, one can spend considerable more time. Doing traffic enforcement and the R C P can be requested to dedicate individuals to do more traffic enforcement.
Can I follow up, Madam Chair, quickly?
You certainly can.
So my concern with option one is, is the. It's the last few words of the direction which are to negotiate a new agreement. And I don't necessarily know that that's exactly what we want to do for sure. That we, you know, to hire a new A T E operator or, or perhaps offer a new contract to Global. Maybe the better option is that A T E doesn't even exist anymore and other conventional methods are used, so I'd like. Some way to be able to explore those options to discuss them and, and maybe come up with a hybrid model. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir, Councilor Hawes.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate Counselor Stashik's words as well, because I'm. We kind of touched on this the last meeting when we were discussing the report. And the, the possibilities of other means of traffic control in our communities, because as much as A T E. Can help us, it doesn't cover all the areas all the time. And, and quite frankly, I mean, A T E. You come to know what the truck looks like and, and eventually it's even going to have a sticker on it, things like that. So there's areas that are still. I believe risk areas that, you know, we could look at other options, so I, I agree. I, I would like to investigate, you know, what other A T A options we may have. But at the same time, I'd like the organize, or the different partners enforcement agencies to get together. And, and investigate other sources of traffic control in our community. We, and, and utilize some of those maybe reserve funds that are for traffic safety. And I know that we talked about, you know, different signages, we have the portable signage in our community, but what about stationary areas? You know, and we brought up the example of Jasper, I believe I did, you know, when you come into Jasper, there's the flashing, you know, light that slows you down. You know, I think there's a lot of different technologies out there that we could also be utilized in our community. You know, especially down residential streets, you know, that are high risk areas and, and such. So I'd like to see too a kind of a hybrid, you know, look at it as well, because A T is not the only answer. We've, we've already seen that, we may have reduced in other areas, but there are other areas that we can focus on as well. So I, I would be in, in, in support of if there was a secondary possible direction. I'm still going to support the first one, but I, I do like the piece of the third one as well to, to investigate that as, as a. As another option for our community, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hawes. So we do have a motion on the floor, it sounds like. It's something that may be amended, could be withdrawn, could be fixed up. This is something that maybe we need to have more conversation on. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I would support a, a, an amendment. To bring forward a report to council by a certain date pertaining to option three, and to put the wording in. And I would gladly support that. I think it's important to notify A T or Global that we want to cease. That, but I do believe also regardless of what that conversation looks for. Option three, that I would like to see an R F P regardless, and we're not committed to unnecessarily, it's ideally, you, you should have the appetite, but. unnecessarily. It's ideally, you you should have the appetite, but um, I I would strongly want to see an RFP regardless. Um, but yeah, um, somebody wants to make a motion to add a report by a certain date, I would gladly support that. Thanks.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Right now, we do have a motion on the floor, on the so we have to deal with that one. And Chief, did you want to say something?
Uh, Madam Chair, if I may, uh, just to provide a little more background information for Counselor Haas and Mayor Marcel. I have already started to explore some of those other traffic pacifying methods. Uh, so the flashing LED signage. Uh, also exploring whether or not that would be permitted along the highway corridor. Uh, not just on our residential streets and school zones, uh, where some in some areas, it's already being used. Uh, they're very effective, uh, but there would be a cost involved with that. So that would form part of my two thousand twenty-three budget proposal, uh, if if that is the route we choose to go down.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, I for I I like option one, where we go to an RFP, and I don't see how this changes. Like, we have three agencies doing traffic, like, and Total Raider does, I just told, thousand twelve hundred tickets, and the RCMP and bylaw five hundred tickets each. I believe that's the number that I was told. We already have a faulty approach to traffic enforcement and the fact that A T is not really costing us money. It's more deferred revenue in the future. I think it would be prudent to use that as long as we can use it fairly to the people that drive on roads. And I believe we've got a fair system now for people that drive on roads. So I I'm favorite of I'm a favor of option one, and I think I heard from the fire chief that the other we haven't excluded the other two options that are gonna naturally come either during the service level review, because we had a business case where we looked at who's gonna do traffic by law or or RCMP, and that was gonna get brought to the service level review. This is all gonna come to fruition.
Hey, so it sounds like you were showing support to our mayor's motion on some.
Correct.
And CEO?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as I take a look and I I hear the committee's discussion uh, around number one, I I'm I I'm thinking possibly number one will satisfy what the committee's looking to achieve. Maybe with a little tweaking of it. And and what I mean by that is it currently reads to issue an RFP to select a new operator and negotiate a new agreement. I I think perhaps all you need to do is terminate the contract. Issue an RFP. The issuance of an RFP does not obligate the town to enter into new contract. It simply issues a new RFP. I think this would then give the town time to consider other options and other partnerships availability. Some of the discussions I've heard that start to speak to the mayor's comment regarding option three. And I think if you were to maybe just make a minor friendly amendment to number one, you may accomplish I think similarly with the termination of the contract, the issuance of the RFP and the consideration out of the service level review, some of the other options around traffic enforcement.
Counselor Stashik, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to propose an amendment, whether it's friendly or not. It's up to Mayor Michaels, I guess. Uh, I would propose to amend, uh, the direction to read that committee direct administration to allow the current agreement to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. With intent to cease the existing A T E program effective that date and issue a request for proposal, RFP to potentially select an A T E operator for Hinton. And that would be the end of it. If I could speak to it?
Yes, sir.
The reason I'm requesting that as an amendment is I I don't think that the wording of the proposed direction commits administration to selecting an A T operator and to negotiate a new agreement. At this point, I'm not comfortable in giving that firm a direction that A T is for sure how we want to see traffic safety enforced in our community. So I do want to see some options, and I think this way it doesn't commit either council or administration to entering a new A T agreement for sure. Thank you. So I'd look to Mayor Michaels to see if he'd accept that, and if not, I will propose it as a regular amendment.
Yeah, absolutely, Madam Chair. If I may, I I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, um, Counselor Stashik. So I look to administration right now. The first thing we have to do is deal with the amendment. So I would agree the amendment, have a vote, that it would be able to know.
Mayor Michaels accepted it as friendly.
That it's now within the motion?
It's a single, now it's a single, it's just the vote on the motion.
Okay. So council, any more discussion, debate on this motion on some of the part? If not, we will see the motion. So I will call the question, but I'm sorry?
Can you just give me a minute to read it?
But committee direct administration to allow the current agreement to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two with the intent to cease the existing automated traffic enforcement A T E program effective that date and issue a request for proposal, RFP to potentially select an A T E operator for Hinton. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Counselor Stashik.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I would like to propose another direction, if I may. Uh, like like to move that committee direct administration in joint effort with the RCMP. Oh, sorry.
Yep. And then it's basically, it's a big chunk of option three, if that's easier for you to copy and paste. Actually, that's pretty much, that's pretty much it. One second.
If we could just take out the word alternate? I don't know. I I would look to administration for some for recommendation on the date.
Madam Chair, if I could respectfully, um, we're already contemplating the end of the calendar year for the termination of the A T E contract. Um, that's gonna put us into the first quarter of two thousand twenty-three on the issuance of an RFP and the possible consideration of an A T contractor. So I would suggest you you could almost run this in parallel. I would see you'd want to give time for a a discussion with the RCMP, consideration with bylaw enforcement. I would suggest maybe and maybe and maybe it informs even the RFP. So maybe the end of the year, if that's acceptable to the the committee, I would suggest maybe December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Uh, I'd like to add that date, Madam Chair. Perfect. Thank you.
Council, we have a direction and Council Hawes.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'll be in support of this, and I think honestly, that's a recommended date. It sounds to me the chief uh, is already working on some of those uh, strategies, uh, potentially, so it could come to us sooner than that. And I agree that it can come parallel. This is you know, separate from our A T E. So, um, I'm it sounds like I'm pretty confident that we're gonna be hearing on some of these matters during the budget process as well for two thousand twenty-three. So I'll be in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hawes and Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, I support it too. I got a question for the chief. Um, this means some mention of level of service. What level of service are we actually seeking for traffic enforcement? Do you have a goal in mind? A number of tickets, perhaps?
Uh, through the chair, and I and I do not mean to be flippant. If we didn't have to issue a ticket, that would be success. Uh, but unfortunately, that is not the case. There will always be traffic enforcement and always a need for that traffic enforcement in Hinton. Uh, so uh, we did, we need to have some discussions with the RCMP and the Police Advisory Committee to determine what is it that we want to accomplish, uh, and what are the targets? We don't, we don't set, uh, quotas or anything like that, that that's unrealistic, but we should have some targets and and some initiatives to promote traffic safety. And that's not just speed enforcement. It's seatbelt, it's distracted driver. It's any number of things. And and there's many programs that the RCMP run on a monthly basis. They have monthly initiatives for traffic safety, and we really need to promote that within the town of Hinton.
Counsel, could I follow?
You certainly may, sir.
Would it be fair to say that because this C T E program, the number of tickets per hour we're giving out uh, seem to be even less than two tickets per hour? And they used to be way higher than that a few years ago, that that's an indication of safety with this token?
Uh, through the chair, absolutely, that is correct. Uh, in some of the enforcement zones, we've gone from real problem areas to they rarely issue a ticket in that area. And it's and it could be because people know that traffic is being enforced in those zones, uh, so they slow down. Uh, but that in itself is a success. That's educating the public.
Thanks.
Counselor Hawes.
Yeah, just to add, or at least emphasize, I I I appreciate Chief, your comments on the speed is not only our concern, um, and unfortunately A T, as my understanding, does not include like distracted driving even, right? Um, things like that. So these are other matters that, um, I think are quite uh, again, a safety concern in our community. Uh, I see it many, many times in our community. I think I've I can uh, uh, speak for some of our community members too, of, you know, having some traffic incidences that includes some distracted driving. So I appreciate that, because I think this is again, those strategies that we look out is, you know, we've reduced, and that's great that A T may have reduced some, you know, those safety concerns in some of those areas, but there's other other safety concerns than just speeding. Um, and and that's with these strategies, and that's why I'm in favor of this motion as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hawes. So, um, Chief, I just have to say, today I witnessed our peace officers at a radar, and I am going, you go guy. It's so disrespectful when people speed in our town. So I I almost want to just applaud him. So thank you so much for what you do. So council, we do have a direction on the floor. Any more debate on that? If not, I will vote question. The committee direct administration in joint effort with the RCMP, peace officers and other enforcement agencies to explore strategies and tactics to complement the overall traffic safety efforts in Hinton by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Council, all votes in favor? And that is carrying. Any other, um, comment on this topic? Okay, and before we carry on, I do have to make an apology. I don't know why this is happening throughout this whole meeting. I have been saying there is a motion on the floor. At standing committee meetings or committee of the hall, you cannot make a motion. They are directions. So I apologize, and I won't do that again at this meeting. Thank you. So, uh, we are going to carry on to our next, um, item, and that is five point four, replacement of the town own sweeper. That is page one fifty-two on your agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're on page one fifty-two. Um, and actually, to turn this over, I'm not sure who Winston wants to have speak to this, but his team is here with us, and we will go over the report and administration will be available with any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Seo Hanlin, and thank you, committee, for the opportunity to bring back the report to you with several options for sweeper that, you know, is near the end of its life. Uh, what, just one thing I wanted, maybe, or two things I want to mention to the committee is that you'll see that optional or the recommended action is almost identical to what we brought back in on May the tenth. Um, however, I also want to point you to option two, that if you really want to focus on this report, like, option one and option two is really where what will work for us in in the short term. And so John will walk us through the various options we have here. But I just wanted to be committed to understand that we are not sort of specifically pointing to wanting to get a partially used machine as I actually want to say for our operations and to to remain viable to go out of season. That would be the best to reduce our mechanic time, to reduce our breakdown time. But we've gone a step further based on some from council at the time or the committee at the time to look at what our options could be. So at this point, I'm gonna just hand it over to John, who's done the bulk of the report, and we have Lance here as well. Our chief mechanic was able to support some of the technical side of things. So John, with you.
Thank you, Winston, through you, and Paul, too. Um, Madam Chair and committee, uh, can you guys hear me okay? Is my audio okay? Okay. Thanks. Uh, I just, uh, have, I'll go through some of the options here, you guys. So the first option is similar to the the first option I originally presented. Um, the purchase of a near-new diesel-powered rental return sweeper. Uh, it's been identified as a premier value option by administration, uh, because it saves us about roughly fifteen percent on a new one. Uh, and the hours are between five hundred and one thousand, which are relatively low, and and it gets a a complete overhaul once, um, once it's returned from its rental season. So it should come to us, you know, in tip-top shape. I've outlined a little bit of the, uh, the maintenance costs of it here. This is a full-cost recovery, ninety-eight dollars an hour, and that was, um, I was able to obtain that information from the town of White Court, Director of Infrastructure. So that is my my our favorite option, just speaking with mechanics and Winston and myself here, uh, because of the 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 savings on a new sweeper. And and I think there's a lot of life to be had there. I'm sure Lance could speak further to that. But I'll I'll go through some of the options here, uh, first. So option two is a complex option uh, involving, um, the purchase of a used sweeper to get through the next two to three years, um, hopefully at a cost of around one hundred, one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, uh. Um, now this relies heavily on the availability of a of a functional used sweeper, which, um, just in reaching out to, uh, a few different retailers and checking out sources online, um, the market is a little bit slim right now, just because of supply chain issues and things like that, uh. So that could present a challenge. Uh, now, in the event that, well, you know, we can't find something, uh, the contingency we came up with is to to, um, reserve a rental sweep for the two thousand twenty-three season. So that needs to be spoken for by October, September, October. Um, and we can rent the sweeper at a cost of sixteen thousand five hundred per month. I was able to speak with a retailer who rents and and negotiate that uh, similar to the, I don't know if you guys recall the two thousand eleven international truck that we had rented. We had a deal in place where eighty percent of the rental cost would would be applied to the purchase of the rental return if we were to decide to purchase it after that time. So there is an option there to spec out a machine exactly how we would need it and rent it in the event that we couldn't find a sweeper that was used and inexpensive to carry us through for a couple of years. Um, and then at that time, we could, you know, apply most of the cost of rental to to purchasing it, which is which is a solid option. Uh, and then this, uh, part C to this option is also that we would be able to have a little bit of time to continue researching, uh, the emerging technology here, hybrid electric type units, um. A a recent phone call was made to to Raymax, who retails the global environmental products, electric sweepers. Uh, we were able to determine that, uh, Just very recently here, um, I think in the last few days, the, the city of Saskatoon has actually ordered four of these. Fully electric units. So I'm not sure the timeline on when they're going to receive them. They, I, as far as I know, they're, they're backward for a significant amount of time, but. That might give us a little bit of a, a window into how they run in, in a climate similar to ours here. Let somebody with a, you know, a little bit bigger of a budget for these things, um. Take a look at these units and, and operate them for a few years and we can. Maybe, um, have a little session, chat with them and, and see what their experiences are. From there, we can move in that direction in the near future. Um, option three was to purchase a brand new sweeper. With an intended ten to fifteen year lifespan. So. Obviously, the cost is a little bit higher than snagging one of these rental returns. The rental return, um. Kind of hangs on the fact that we would have to move pretty quickly as well. Uh, because I believe early September is when they become available and most of them get snatched up pretty quick. So it would be ideal to put our names on something like that as soon as possible with a brand new purchase. Um, we would have a little bit more time to spec something out, but obviously then the cost goes from about three hundred fifty thousand to around four hundred thousand. So we've got option four. Which is, uh, the purchase of a hybrid diesel electric sweeper. And so I've, I've outlined, um, two different options I've been able to come up with here. And option five is to purchase a fully electric, uh, street sweeper. Both of those options, four and five, um. There are grants available and I've outlined a little bit here at the end. Of my analysis. That the Federation of Cana- uh, Canadian municipalities offers a grant for green innovations. Uh, that could cover up to fifty percent of the total cost, up to five hundred thousand dollars. Um, and then upon speaking to FCM, it was determined by them that a feasibility study would significantly aid in the approval of the. Green innovation grant, and they do offer grants. To cover up to fifty percent of an external consultant to provide the feasibility study as well. Uh, and then, uh, at the end of the analysis here, I've just included a little table. Just to break down the options by the numbers a little bit more streamlined there as well. Um, so. I guess, um, our recommended action here is that committee direct administration to bring back the replacement of town owned sweeper. Nineteen ninety seven Elgin Eagle. Report option one. Purchase a near new diesel powered rental return street sweeper to the regular council meeting on August sixteenth. Twenty twenty two for decision as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Markel. Also, any questions? Comments on this? Yes, sir.
I'm good with the recommended action. I'll make the recommendation that the committee direct administration to bring back replacement of town owned sweeper. As per earlier.
So is your direction option one?
Yeah, the one that they recommended. And.
So counsel, we do have a direction before us. Any debate?
But just to follow up, uh, this is the administration's professional recommendation. We've had it twice. Um, I think it's a little premature to go electric or something else in view of the fact that there doesn't seem to be experienced, uh, you know, maintenance data on some of those options. And it seems like once this, uh, option one thing gets overhauled, it's just as good as the brand new option and give us a substantial, uh. Life. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, um, Counselor Stashner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm fully in support of the, uh, recommended action that Counselor Taylor's put forward. Uh, I, I agree with the, uh. Sentiment that, uh, maybe it's not quite time to take a look at a alternative energy, uh. Street sweeper yet, considering the supply chain issues and, uh, the fact that they're relatively unproven so far. Uh. I think this is the better option. Aside from that, though, I do want to take a minute to commend administration on. Their creativity in seeking out these, uh. Rental return units. I think that is definitely going to be. The best option for the dollars spent. Uh, I think anybody who's ever bought a brand new vehicle or. Band new, brand new piece of equipment knows that they often have bugs it with them when they come brand new. The fact that these are five hundred to a thousand operators, operating hours means the bugs have probably worked out of them. So we should be able to get them on board and run them reliably. At a substantially lower cost than if, uh. Administration had just gone out and sought RFPs for brand new, uh, street sweepers. So. Thank you for your work and I appreciate it and I fully support the recommended action, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Stashner. Counselor Haas.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I too support this. I appreciate all the options brought and realizing that it is. Early in, in the development of these hybrid, you know, and electrical and it, I think I appreciate the, the comment about Saskatoon is. Looking at them to, to get at some insight from them. Once they've started rolling them out into the streets and see how they work. I think that's great. Um, you know, uh, FCM is always there and, and of course the green initiative is. Is not going to be anything that ends anytime soon. So we can look at it at a future date and maybe look at. Other options of that's electrical, maybe in a smaller basis for a community in the future as well and start that way. Um. The only question that I have and, and it's just for, uh, uh, the, the comment that, uh, was made in regards to getting. Kind of a head start on this because September is a, a crucial time to get your name in for them. Um, you know, would. Would, is it that August second is just too full and we can't fit it into that agenda? Uh, so that we can move this quicker through instead of waiting a couple of weeks. Uh, that gives then at least, you know, the opportunity to get our name in as early as possible. So administration, that's my only question to you.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. And, um, yes, administration.
Yeah, so the August the second is not day too early. The only reason was we want to show the council to land some, some more, what it should give us. So the, the report's pretty much in a state and there's enough background and research done. So John and T and Lance has done all the network. So, uh, we could bring it with permission of, you know, Helen, that the agenda committee would accept it for August the second, August the second.
And so I, 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 that. I will leave it in the hands, but like I said, I don't want to miss out on the opportunity. I know Counselor, uh, Taylor made the direction. Uh, so if, if, uh, there is. If it's possible, I would like to see it on the second, get it done out of the way and get them, get their papers. Or get them rolling on getting the paper, whatever needs to be done to get our name in there. So, um, I'm looking maybe for a friendly amendment to Counselor Taylor then.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I, I look to instead of the August sixteenth to make the friendly amendment to August second instead.
Perfect.
And you're.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, very good.
You're good, Counselor Haas? Good?
Yes, thank you very much.
And, um. Administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to add, it's been, I did a bit of talk yesterday myself with the AMAX because John is actually. Quite sick as he's appearing on the screen. So I thought, well, this is probably going to be with Lance and I, so I could did a bit of homework. And Raymax has actually talked about a hydro cell, um, hydrogen cell machine as well. And what that does is, and I actually personally, just because of my own interest here, as that is it. It actually produces forty three gallons, one hundred sixty two liters through a chemical reaction. That takes place through this whole process of operating the machine. Now I can't speak for the things that Lance would look at in terms of broom capacity and how it would be. Upstir and the curves, but that hundred sixty two liters of water gets put right back into the harbor that we can repurpose. For the street to give it that sort of sheen of, of cleansing effect. And so the technology is evolving by the hour. And so I think we're making the right decision here, counsel, to bring back that we give the market its chance to be able to. Look at the various options, be it hybrid, be it fully electric, be it hydro cell component. And at the same time, we can explore the grant when I say explore, meaning go and apply for it. And saying that this is there until we get it, then we can say, okay, do we have a compliment? It's about four hundred thousand, I think, at the time of council, because as Lance would tell us very comfortably that the second machine that is. Close, the second machine that we have is very close on the heels of also needing to talk about to get up late up today. I was just behind an all-star project committee, behind one of our supers today on Mountain State, and there wasn't much on the street. But it wasn't doing much. And I'm not, uh, sort of bashing the operator because he was doing his best, but we, we really just now. You know, put in good money for the well come in terms of using the existing machine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir, very much. I'm next to you. I just have to say, this report steered me to option one, it truly did. But another thing that really stirred me to option one is the operator. I, um. The sweeper was parked, the operator was there and I thought, what a wonderful opportunity to get to talk to somebody. Who drives the same every single day. And I spent time with that person and Algon just tried and proved. He could not say anything bad about that machine and operating it. So, um, so I of course control of option one. Counselor Stashner.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. To, to, um. Uh, to the comments, uh, from the director regarding the, uh, the, um. Water production. Just, uh, just to clarify, because the unit that you're speaking of is hydrogen powered. The byproduct of the hydro, hydrogen combustion is H two O, which is water. Now water can then be used on the street sweeper recaptured and reused as a wetting agent to, to prevent dust. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So that, to me, that's brilliant. And I think that's one of the things that. By deferring a decision on electric to something further and alter, a different alternative energy powered. Street sweeper at some point in the future. I actually think that hydrogen is the future of, of alternatively powered vehicles. I don't think it's electric. I think it's hydrogen. We, we were at AUMA last year or, or AM, I guess it's called now. And there were, there were presentations on the benefits and the future of hydrogen powered. Vehicles, and I think we all understood, realized that this is one of them with the. You know, the, uh, uh, benefit that I never considered that it makes its own water. That's. That's great. I think that's, that's interesting and it's another reason that I want to go this way this time around. So that there are some options, maybe at that time there will be a viable hydrogen option that can be available for purchase. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Stashner. Um, and if you don't mind.
No, please.
At long.
That's something I wanted to add. Compared to what we're currently running. The fairly new. Sweeper, like very, very low use to rental return option. Like the technology even in those, those years as far as fuel consumption and what it's putting out the tailpipe. Is considerably better than what we're currently running anyways. So for people who are, you know, concerned about the green aspect of things. It would be considerably less pollutant and stuff than what we're currently running, even though it is still a big mechanical diesel sweeper, yes. But there is definitely a considerable reduction in what we're putting out our tailpipe there.
Thank you very much. Counselor Tanner.
Oh, I wasn't going to say it, but another reason why I like the option that we've got is that it supports the oil and gas industry and, uh. Diesel. But that being said, if this town decides that it wants to go green and it wants to go electric. I'd rather that be part of a broader policy, not a vehicle by vehicle thing. I would rather start with like a small vehicle rather than a four hundred thousand dollar vehicle and try to. And then we got to discuss, why are we doing it? What do we want to save in the environment? How much are we prepared to spend with it? I'd rather do it that way than tackle it vehicle by vehicle here. I think it just makes more sense personally.
Thank you, everyone. Counselor Kim, you're good? So we do have a direction. Any more debate on this? And seeing none? So I will call it a question. But committee direct administration to bring back the replacement of town owned sweeper nineteen ninety seven Elgin Eagle. Report option number one. Purchase a near new diesel powered. Rental returns. Street sweeper to the regular council meeting on August second, twenty twenty two for decision as presented. And all votes in favor? And it is very, thank you, administration, very, very much. Lance, thank you so much for coming here. Thank you, John.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Yeah, any more, um, discussion on this? And seeing none? Do, uh, does anyone require a break? Okay, so we're gonna, um. We'll just go to a adjourn for seven minutes and then. Hey, welcome back. We're going to start our meeting again. We are on, um. Five point five of our reports from administration and, um, Robert housing initiative update. Page one ninety five. And administration.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'm gonna hand this over to. Adam Weber and Mr. Rousseau is, uh, and very pleased to bring this back to council. We felt it was appropriate with the. Contract award now and it was time for an update. And, uh, so you do have the report. My apologies to those that couldn't open it earlier today. Um, I hope now, uh, everybody's had a chance to at least take a quick look at it and, uh. The administration will go through the report and be available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Seo Hanlin. Um, thank you, committee. Good to see you this evening. Um. I'm sure that when you read the background on the report. It seems like a lot of dates and a lot of changes. Um, it's been a very interesting five months since we. Started down this path. So since February first, um, when council made the motion. You know, that they, uh, endorsed, that you endorsed a construction plan with a minimum of eight units, but the goal was building ten units. Um, and then to move forward with our debenture. Uh, at that time, we also reassessed, uh, do we have the right, uh, project management services, given that the scope is changing a little bit. Um, and some of the other parameters around the build has changed. Uh, so of course we went out with an RFP for that, um, Colliers was awarded that, uh, RFP. Uh, they've got a lot of history, extensive history back to two zero twenty when this enti- entire endeavor began. Uh, they also are very familiar with the granting requirements from CMHC and of course they were competitive in terms of pricing. Um, then again, we met again on April fifth, uh, to bring the debenture back for third reading, completed that with, with council's blessing. April sixth, so the next day we did the kickoff meeting with Colliers and the pre-qualified. Contractors that were chosen back in two zero twenty for the design build. Much to our surprise, the position, of course, since two zero twenty, the market conditions, everything's changed in the universe since then. And so on the very next day after we had this kickoff meeting with, uh, three of these shortlisted, uh, contractors. Two of them pulled out and said for various reasons that, that they weren't going to be able to, uh, put a proposal for it. Um, the, the third one stayed in, but, but their proposal wasn't complete, nor did it fit our criteria. Uh, some of the, uh, things that were brought forward at that time are the aggressive deadlines for the CMHC grant funding requirement. Um, the scope had changed, of course, with a minimum of eight units, really challenging these companies. To, uh, put their pen to paper to, to come up with more units. And then, of course, our, uh, different inflationary changes and, and dynamic market conditions. So at that point, we met with Colliers on April eleventh to discuss what our new procurement strategy was going to be. So that's not very long. Um, before we had to really pivot a little bit. We went out, decided public tender is the best process. Let's try to get a new selection of design bill contractors for this purpose. So we went ahead and did that. Um, it was posted, um, April twenty first to close, May twentieth. And only one bid was received and it was non-compliant with the criteria that we had set forward in the RFP. So again. We, we had to really determine what's the next strategy move for this. Um. At this point, we had looked at all the different public ten, tenuring processes. We completed everything required through our procurement processes. And then we decided to go ahead and change again to a targeted procurement strategy. In which case we actually went out and, and looked at companies that could fulfill this, uh, criteria. Um, at the same time, we changed scope a little bit for the project. We decided to send out the onsite and offsite servicing, recognizing we weren't going to get a general contractor that. Come and build the facility or build the units and do all the onsite servicing. Those, those companies were not coming to the table. So we decided, okay. We will pull that out and have that as a separate contract to do all the utilities onsite and offsite. And then just have someone build buildings. So that was another big strategic change. And then we went out and got three requests for those engineering. Or sorry, engineer, three engineering service quotations for that. Uh, so here we are, uh, we've moved down, we've got, um. two design build companies that that successfully put proposals forward for our consideration. Um, those came in June third. So between June third and June twenty fourth, Colliers and administration were feverishly with those companies. And they'll shoot few short weeks to go through their proposals in a detailed fashion, really hone the criteria. What do we want? How do we get it? What can you provide? All of those things and those companies worked very, very hard uh to come up with their final proposals. Um, June twenty fourth, we made a decision uh based on those final proposals with assistance from Colliers to select Noble Offsite Limited as our preferred design builder for for the units. Um, the onsite and offsite servicing, we got our quotations in and June twenty first, that contract was awarded to McLean, who's already working with Colliers for different portions of this project. So it just made sense then altogether that McLean will be looking after the onsite servicing. The offsite servicing to the town, which is the tie in from those parcels to our town infrastructure and then also working with Noble Offsite to hook up those connections to the units themselves. Uh, so that brings us up to June twenty first, July fifth, there was a kickoff meeting uh with administration, McLean, uh Colliers and Noble to talk about who's doing what, how are we going to coordinate ourselves, what's the plan? We're looked at the prelim plans in your package. Uh, the same week, we also had a kickoff meeting to get the onsite and offsite servicing engineering worked out as well with McLean. Since then, both of those companies have been working together behind the scenes to do what they need to do to figure out the servicing and the utilities for the units themselves onsite. Um, in the analysis section, you'll see that the Noble Offsite proposal includes ten housing units, which is a great success for us because that was what we um had been, you know, targeting that was council's wishes. We want more than eight units. Um, we got eight single bedroom units at five hundred and sixty square feet, of which two of those are going to be accessible units like for wheelchair accessible, which has slightly different dimensions within them. And then two of them are double bedroom units, like a two bedroom at that seven hundred ninety one square feet. Um, the other great thing about this is it meets the criteria for the land use bylaw that we already had put into place as a result of the design shred that was done in twenty twenty, which had a a maximum square footage criteria for these homes. So we were within that and we've also hit the target um from uh the Evergreen Foundation when Kristen Chambers came to talk to council about, you know, how big a unit do we want? What would be best for the for the targeted group that you're looking at? You know, and she had mentioned as well that five hundred square foot, nothing more than eight hundred for sure. Because of the because of the dark targeted demographic that um the council was considering at the time. So we've definitely fit that. Um, Kristen's also been part of the conversation. So, you know, she's she's intricately aware of where we're at. Um, there'll be more involvement as we move forward with development of the of the units. They did provide in the package um the uh the plan. And I just wanted to let counsel know this is a preliminary plan. Um, there will be some adjustments to the orientation and the location of of how these units sit together. Uh, just based on where our utility lines are on that property base. But we're not confined to the red boundary that's on the map. That was just something that administration put in place to give us some idea of where we want to build. But that boundary is not a hard it's not a hard boundary and then it's a defined boundary in any kind of a document where we've got flexibility. But but it gives you an idea of where the parking lots would be, where the access point would be and how those buildings would be situated in relation to one another. So it is a very preliminary plan. Also attached in the council package is the floor plans for the units. Um, and as you can see, there's there's uh three single units in a row and then the last unit on both groupings is the two bedroom. It's just gotten a an additional module for the second bedroom. And one of those units is accessible. It's got the circles in it just showing the dimensions of those those facilities to ensure that they're wheelchair accessible. Um, and again, uh, there'll be a little bit of uh shift on some of those. I think that's a fairly firm floor plan. And then as you progress through the package, some of the way they present, I think the color pictures kind of give you the best idea of how they could look from the outside. And of course, the palette, uh, the color palette, the textures, the the products that we're going to use, that's all up for discussion still. So it's just they, we wanted some kind of renderings to give council some idea of how these could look all in a row from different angles. And so they actually took the land base from the from Bhutan lands to put those on. That's the background you're seeing. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that council may have for us. And Winston Russo would be happy to answer any of them.
Administration.
You I may thank you, Madam Chair. Just to add a little bit more, Debbie actually diluted quite a bit in terms of what it took to bring this to this point. I mean, to the point that I had calls on a Friday evening from these proponents that we were negotiating with and said to me, what is wrong with you guys, the town of Inte? Your strict deadlines is just not happening. Said, well, this is what it takes. Maybe we'll come out the better for it. And anyway, here we are today, um, having pulled this off. As you know, I did quite a few projects in my lifetime, but this one I will put at the top of my list to be able to be agile, nimble as administration and think outside the box. With all respect, I see I haven't didn't even know at one point where we at, we just made decisions, Debbie and I. And we said, counselor, I see, please bear with us at the eleven fifteen on a Friday, June the twenty fourth. Debbie called up I C O Hammond and said, we need your okay on this pricing is going up on July the first on Wednesday. And so she put it mildly and and it's just, you know, it's exciting to see it come together. The final thing I'll just say, and we'll open it up again, Madam Chair. Is that we have a deadline for October thirty to have at least twenty percent of these units. I mean, you need two units completely ready to move in. They've almost guaranteed us that they are already falling off site as these are modular units. And this the site grading and all of that is going on, that team is going down. So right now, that's the only sort of kind of thing. It makes me a little nervous, but we've come thus far. And I will say the entire team from Colliers to the internal team, C E O handling included with the support has brought us to where we are today that we can actually look you in the face and say, are we on the right road here? We're gonna get this done.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Counselor Taylor.
No, it sounds positive. Ten per se, still on time. On budget, I think. There's no cost plus stuff that we have to worry about. The one comment, my question maybe might be related to the neighbors all aware of what's going on here? You know, within the neighbor neighborhood and that sort of stuff. That's not going to come to surprise us later on.
To Chair, Madam Chair, to Counselor Taylor's comment, um, the short answer is they don't know what we're sharing with you yet. That's why I said to C E O Henlon that we need to get first the concept to council. It can be in an open forum because it's a good news story. Um, the next step would be is to start that stakeholder awareness engagement that we are coming. In fact, there's a meeting tomorrow onsite at eleven where all the proponents, the contractors, the colleagues, the architects are on site. So we are going to put something out into the media as well. To inform everybody that this is coming because tomorrow will be the fighting day in terms of what the collaboration has meant in terms of timelines that we are not aware of right now, tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Good, Counselor Taylor.
Um.
Okay, I have a question. Uh, do you have a attendant date for groundbreaking in?
I I think tomorrow there is a good chair. To Madam Chair, we don't have the date right now because this project is a little bit different because groundbreaking has already happened offsite. Because they have secured materials. In fact, we had to put an upfront deposit of X percent.
Okay.
Which has been approved by the C E O and finance department for them to get going. So they've already procured materials. They lined up. Um, they are constructing as we speak in their warehouse from April in Edmonton.
Okay.
But we could come back to council. We'll bring you another update through your C E O update maybe at the next council meeting as to when that groundbreaking. And we could probably shoot to, I guess.
So two quick ones. Uh, are these prefabs for being built offsite and then dropped to Inte?
Yes.
The next one is, how big is this room here? How big? With this room. It's five hundred. What is it? Five hundred and sixteen. Twenty sixteen. Five hundred and sixteen square feet. I'm just gonna get a feel for what size this is.
If I may, Madam Chair, the uh the length is thirty eight. Eight. And I'm trying to read the width.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, so four feet. So this room would be bigger than that. Okay, yeah, it's a little bit bigger. This room would be a little bit bigger.
It's a little wider.
Yes.
Might be about thirty eight this way, but this is closer to twenty feet across.
And I'll just be really quick here. When you were saying the uh outside of the building, now we determine later through other discussions. Oh, who will be having those discussions as in, like I love the renderings, what I've seen here, that problem. So who will be part of that discussion on the outside of the business?
That would be all of our teams. So that would be us as administration, Colliers and Noble would all be involved in that.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor.
The bike path that goes by here, is that still going to be maintained?
Yes. And Mr. Rousseau?
Yeah, Madam Chair, you just sparked a thought when um the C E O of Evergreen was here that night and she presented. She talked about the sides and what is serviceable, what she's saying. And so we're in very close contact with Evergreen as well. In actual fact, um, just using more on that first call we had with Noble, all our engineers and ourselves, and she was privy to all of this information already. So she thought that the square footage puts what the need is out there. I think phase two, as we'll definitely get into a phase two with the success of this project. We can then look at maybe an alternative that could be marketable, as we said, and make some myself assume that's often because these people, Noble, what I'm learning from them is is that they've done a lot of classroom um sort of prefab for the government developer. They've done working B C modular type homes. And so I'm very excited to, if they are they perform pretty well, that we could fall on that success to see what they can even produce for us as if you look at it, maybe a larger footprint of a house and what's in this year's dictating the next intake of grants.
Good, thank you very much. Counselor Taylor.
The locals had a chance to put bids on this?
We at this one, because it's so specialized, but it was out for four weeks.
I wish I could service.
Yeah.
Public tender.
That's right now going, yeah. So everybody's getting a chance. It's going on a website too.
Prescribed. That hasn't been worked.
No, no.
Okay.
McLean is just looking after getting the engineering sorted out and then it'll come.
So council, we do not have a direction and Counselor Haas.
Yeah, um, I'd like to make that direction that administration recommends. Or sorry, option one, sorry. Pardon me. That committee accepts Rapid Housing Initiative Update Report for information, please.
Thank you, sir. Any debate of this? You have a direction on the floor?
Just gonna speak to it real quick, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, again, thank you for all the hard work. Definitely that's gone behind this. We do have those tight deadlines. Um, a lot of those deadlines are, you know, are are put on us. Uh, but I really appreciate administration and the work that they've done to put this all together and and get get those providers uh arranged so we can get started on this. So uh, it's it's good, good news for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, I echo the same sentiments as Counselor Haas and other counselors spoke prior. Uh, just please thank everyone who participated. I know it's not just uh you two here and there's a lot of peoples. Uh, their hands are in this and they have to do some extra work with everything else that's going on. So uh, this is a success story as it was alluded to and uh uh, great update and looking forward to uh further progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have a direction on the floor. Is there any debate? And seeing none. I will call to question, the committee accepts the Rapid Housing Initiative Update Report for information. Call those in favor. And that is Karen. And yes, sir.
Um, just a question. I don't think it's germane to the decision to announce them. We got two point two five eight as a grant.
Yes.
Now we're uh going to spend one point nine six. So we, what happens to the remaining two point two hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars? What's equals, what what happens there?
Uh, we have a consultant fee that was uh pre-approved in February. That's about a hundred and thirty nine thousand. And then there's some um dispersance attached to that. We are not anticipating spending the full balance of what you are, on the council. Anything that's left over um will have to be returned to the grant home.
But I'd be pretty close.
We'll be so close to the wire that, I'm I'm not really nervous about it. And we will, of course, keep the cost like anyway. And the other thing that we're trying to permit you, Madam Chair, to say this. If we could add further value to the to the lands. So let's say we've got hundred thousand that could be enhanced with landscaping that's more improved, more softer, better experience for the seniors that could move in all the single mothers, that would be our recommendation. And I think that would be quite acceptable to C M H C that we value adding to this because we've been pretty innovative to get the prices down.
I had one more question.
Certainly, sir.
Is this part of the original million dollars that the town spent on the Bhutan lands or just uh on the donated lands that a couple of business people donated this project?
I would acknowledge that landscape with tanks just before my time, but I can check out the data.
I'm assuming that it's on donated lands. It's not on the million dollar ones.
Yeah. If I could just, sir, through you, Madam Chair, just looking at the layout, I believe it's the it's not the larger Bhutan parcel. Yeah. Just looking at the boundary, the parcel boundaries, it looks like a smaller pre-existing parcel that.
Yeah, that's my understanding. That's completely different from the million dollar.
That's the donated portion. This was two and a half years ago. Good, thanks for that.
If that's incorrect, can you confirm that?
I will check that for myself too.
Thank you, administration, very much. And Counselor Stosh.
And Madam Chair. Uh, I would actually like confirmation on that. Regardless, because that's the first I've ever heard anything about that.
Yeah.
My understanding was that was part of the land that was purchased, but I need, I would like clarification of that.
Well.
Okay, so we are uh we've moved along with Rapid Housing. And we're going to go on to our discussion item number six, and that is uh truth and reconciliation discussion of ours led by our interim CEO.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the members of the committee. Uh, the agenda committee and I had a preliminary discussion on this and felt we we can do a verbal discussion here today to seek the will and possible consensus of uh of the committee on what the town may want to do in conjunction with the Truth and Reconciliation Day, which is September thirtieth. This has come through some of our administrative team who are in discussions with other communities and seeing what other communities are doing in conjunction with this. And I I will say it runs the gamut from uh from potentially fairly large, significant municipal events to some communities that are choosing to do nothing. Um, so it is Friday, September thirtieth. Um, administration does not currently have any plans or proposals at this time, but if it was the will of uh of council to uh to move something forward, we simply wanted to ensure we had enough time to implement that. So really here today, just asking the committee members if there's a just a a desire to do something. And if so, administration will return back to a council meeting with a with a report.
So, um, I would love to do some, I would love to do something, but I would like that something to be with our indigenous, working together with our indigenous um.
I I think that's entirely appropriate and I I would expect that we would would make that attempt to reach out and and to involve them in this and ensure that it was something appropriate for the context of the town.
Oh, anyone else want to speak to this? Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'd be interested in in, I I mean, what it looks like and what we're gonna do. I Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'd be interested in, in, I, I mean, what it looks like and what we're going to do. I, I, I don't even, wouldn't want to even say any thing at this point, uh, because I'm, I'm not sure what on the right, uh, events or what, what that might look like, what that day might look like, but I am interested in exploring what options we have. Uh, and, uh, we can, uh, you know, uh, uh, celebrate that day for reconciliation. So I would be in favor of that.
Thank you, Counselor. So I, uh, I think we'll just leave it there then.
I, I think that, that provides administration with enough preliminary direction verbally that we can bring back something to a council meeting with some options and allow council to provide final, uh, final direction.
Thank you very much. So council, we're, uh, we're going to move on to our reporting right now, our council reporting, and I will start with Counselor Taylor.
Nothing to report, just that on, uh, who, who fills in for me at the museum? You?
I don't.
Okay, I need somebody to fill in on August seventeenth for our museum meeting. Anybody can do that? Put your hand up.
Well, well, sorry.
I'll send an email.
Yeah, we have to confirm who the alternate is, if I may, and, and then go from there.
Sir, if you could send that to, uh, Jen and myself, then we'll, we'll notify and call the, uh, the alternate, prevent letting you know.
Good. Thank you, Counselor Taylor. And Counselor Haas.
Nothing to report, Madam Chair.
And Mr. Mayor.
Uh, nothing to report, Madam Chair.
And Counselor Sasha.
They have nothing to report. Thank you.
And I have nothing to report. And we will now hand over to the administration and CEO.
Um, I don't know that I have too much to report, uh. We're saying, um, did want to share with council, but, or excuse me, with the committee, that we've had, uh, very strong interest in the director of community services position. And so we have actually decided to proceed with five interviews in, uh, two each time. So this will be a chance to, uh, to investigate, see if there was a, a good candidate in, in, in amongst those. So, uh, we were quite pleased with, uh, the quality of the individuals that applied. Forty. Not too much more I can be get there. In terms of status reporting, have discussed this and, and it kind of fell off my desk, but I did want to let council know that HR and I met, uh, earlier this, well, yesterday. Um, and have finalized or the process of finalizing the new job descriptions for the proposed manager of legislative services and the legislative ser- service clerk position so that we can get those positions out and posted here as, as soon as possible. So these are, these are existing positions, but we were modifying the job duties to try and try and attract somebody to the town of Hinton with, uh, the skill set necessary for, uh, for legislative service and support to, uh, to administration and council. So it, it's exciting to finally get that done. We'll get that out to market here. And I, I believe likely this will be a good, uh, this will be a, a good recruitment for the, hopefully the permanent, uh, the, the, the new manager of director or director of corporate services. This will be critical hires for this individual. So that'll be important in recruiting this position.
Sorry, are, so are you saying it is a legislative person plus an assistant?
So these are, these are two positions that are, are within the current org structure. And, uh, the manager position was recently vacated when Ms. Wade moved over to, uh, into her new position in Parks. And then the other position has been vacant for some time. That's.
All right. Thank you. Now, at this time, do we get a update from our, from Heather or is I'm just in?
No, we, at this time, we, we have, so the council, the action pending list and, and complete list was circulated for council's information. So that's just accepted at this time and any questions can be asked. Oh, oh, I would suggest in fairness to Heather, I saw her head shaking. Uh, but the, the questions could come to me and I'll do my best to try and answer them.
All right. So right now, um, we're going to be moving into closed session. I believe.
Madam Chair, that is correct. So with, with the conclusion of the reporting, the next item is the mutual performance discussion.
So I would need a motion direction to move into our closed session. All those. On the paper. And the time is, uh, six minutes on patients.